Kaiser here, Comanche Nishlet, 400 bosses chain, auto Comanche de Sache, classi della Chaneli. It's good to be with you here on the September 22 COVID-19 Town Hall update. We have a great day here today. We're going to be discussing some great, actually some new news, some vital updates. So without further ado, let's go and open up here this morning in prayer as we always do. God, we give you praise, Lord. We ask your blessing on this day. Thank you for another day alive. Thank you that we have this opportunity, Lord, to lead our people, Father. We pray for your wisdom, Father, your principal thing, Lord, for your people in which to lead, to make decisions, Lord. Pray for our health command. We pray for our Epi team. We pray for our division of Navajo Health. Lord, we just lift up all of our leaders, Lord, to you and then pray for wisdom, Lord. Help us with this wisdom and the knowledge that we have, Lord, and experience that we have to make crucial decisions, Lord. Be with us, Father. We pray for those that are hurting right now, Lord. We lift them up in prayer. May you heal them. May you provide for them. May you offer your protection, Lord, and your wise counsel. And Lord also favor, we pray for favor on the land. And Lord, as we do, get ready for this weekend, Lord. We pray for the land, Lord, Father, and we know that you'll act in our favor, Lord, and you'll deliver us, Father. So we thank you for that. Thank you for the faith, Lord, that you give by measures. And Lord, we pray for all of our colleagues here. President Nez and Dr. Jim and Arvin Mitchell and just everybody all the way down the line, Lord, Father. Be with them and be with us in this time, Lord, Father. We pray for the current condition, Lord, on Navajo, the spiking that's going on, Lord. We just give it to you right now and then pray that you know all things and you'll take care of us, Lord. So we pray for protection for our people all across the land. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Want to thank you all again. We just have some vital urgent news for you all. And so the rest of this town hall is going to be talking and speaking to that. So I just want to let you know that I was invited to be part of a student's project. And we're granting an interview and so we're out in the field a little bit. But we'll be back, you know, home here real quick here. And just I want to thank you. I thank the president for his leadership first and foremost. Thank Dr. Jim, Arvin Mitchell for doing all that they're doing. I just want you to know too, to stand and be counted. We only have a few short days, less than almost a week to be counted. So if you haven't been counted, be sure to be counted. Arvin's going to give you some vital updates. I hope we're about 25% or 30% right now as a nation. And so we need everybody to be counted, right? It's about representation. It's about funding at the highest level, right? When we need things to be done on Navajo, well, if we're not all counted, then it's going to be hard fighting. But you know, that's what we do too. As leaders, we advocate from DC, Washington, all the way to our state government, then our county, and then it trickles down. So we just need to have a voice and we need you counted. So without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, Jonathan Nez with some vital key updates. And so thank you for your leadership, sir.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Vice President Myron Lizer. Rapid tester. Do di gene. Do e hot a ea haganda ndasot. Ado hot a ea nihinana shida. Allo a a ar di zata. Niche de azlin. Ar onle go. Kada doh kaha. Ado na liha baha hogan go doh onda. Keha la. Do kodo ea chiniyanshin. Niche kodaalia. Eea. Kodo naxandal. Shigine nihikene nihina. Nihika ichi. Ee di chiyand. Do di in da jahagi ya. Ten da tega. Napal. Ee nihichekodaalia. Ee hot a ea haganda. Oh, de akonda. Napal bigi. Shi. Ke da hot oh. Di zata hazlin. Ee hehe nihinana shida. Do e shi olje. Da isis. Da isiltsa. Nihinana shideliya. Kon nihinana taani do. Zelindan lenigi. Bikenzi. Si. Hot a e di kusinsagi. Do ego. Da doh. Wasta. Dina bikaya poka. Ado nihikene nihina. La. Bje doh ben dastil. Di. Sladi. Do ba. Disdi. Do ba a cbi. Nelt a kon nihikene nihina. Di kusinsagi. Zado. Da jit. Nishi. Di. Di nese. Na ausde. Echi kon nihikene nihina. But zu di se. Ado. Kodo hannechi. Hanne ayat. Egi. Ne. Betchana. Dech inegishikom. Atesitzi. Ee or da. Di do hadainol. Ne do. Ka na chi. Hatnigi sa. Ebe naste ni kha shkeinollin. Do kon banta huilne. A kuijin shkeinollin. Di ze baten. Ze baten. Do ea heida. Ba dohtseho. Di kusinsagi naste zata. Na chi kodo nihla. Ze baten. Ee beni na. Di. Niche chingdo. Niche ze bikeda sthi. Akon tada doh kha ashwade. Da nihidine. Ado. Di. Ado iye degol. Ya dalchi. Do onda. Kha da di. Ado alla hnda tleh. Keinollinigi. Ado. Di nihila. Tala woshbe. Ta da. Gesen sanitizers. Da da tega. Chi do dal. Da di no kon sa. Be yeyli. Ti. Ado haganda ndaso. Tchan da di. Niya shkeinollini. Chi ya kon nihla. Di dina bikaya poka onte. Alks isago. Yete kon nihla. Shkeiroshina. Ee nihispeda hazendole. Di belaganabikaya. Nihinago. Ad naate. Naate. Skid kudeso leha hotzoojido. Aji do dedeski. Ado kudido hosdo. Ha hotzooj. Yotcho ha hotzooj. Ee beni na. Ee kon. Naltsoos be. Belanda idle. Di. Thingo. Do onda. Je ta doh leh. Da di no hot a. Naltsoos. Nas konde ilin. La ea. Di chie. Ado onde. Adailne. Da 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 no da ya da ti. Niche masa nihikene nala. Go da nihinani. Lende. Na. Wa. She hot ash yaho. Ah. Nihin. Nihinshin obantza da kes. Nanthi. Ashte da doh ne. Da nihinno hot a sa. Niche. Ashjane deylelende. Akonda. Kada de ilkas. Da nihit. No ade. Di na ade. Do chi hatno da. Zas yes. Ade. Niche chiltoh. Da da no da. Niche. Ya dalchi ne. Shkeiroshina. Eiro ben benalni. Ee karaj hojish. Ako. Di dedeski. Dushnigi ya. Kudje. Di. Le. Do khamtiel. La zaji benago. Aji do. Kon la nahlnegi. Yahilni. Di le. Heixin chana ya go go. Solle. Ha hotzogo. Iya no. Ee kodo ndehkagi. Niche ashjane da yila. Kodo banashne. La shee. Nda noht no. Kon chanda kha. Niche da doh na go. Ee abehzin ya. Di ndehkagi. Bilbeda hazendole. Ado di kon chaiya negido. Yilyahana tza negidi. Di kusinsagi naste zata. Do jo yahalne. Da no. Bahonne. Ashklagejek adazlin. Pa hasti. Hele. Kon yiche na yalet. Huinzen. Do da ea yahalne. Da di heixin. Beda doh. Beda doh na egi. Ako. Kodo niche jo ba in shkenana. Yika ochje. Ado yisna tza. Do onle hagandeshi. Yike yislahtazlin. Ado ee bena chi. Di kon bikaya. Jo beda beda doh na. Beda doh na. Lego ha go shintkada. Da kha. Heixin nan beda doh na. Jo hot a. Atsikhil. Go da da doh. Wasa. Shi keiroshina. Disdi. Disdi. La hanelt a kon. Beda doh na. Di. Do khamtiel. Sej Memorial Hospital. Ha hotzooj. Jo aji ee ka naznela. Hastchan sos tsa dashin. Ako a. Ya dahliya. Ya chapters nda naznela. Ee beni na. Hanne niche. Kohonne. Di demo yajegone. Ee da da doh. Kalthi. Go na hadonni. Ashon. Ya kon nihle. Ashla de. Akon chana ya go go. Yilnehana tza go. Kadei. Tatil. Tatil. Wetna halen. Kudjin dech kha agi. Shi keiroshina. Yan da. Ee beni na. Ee kodo thinshi. Da da onda. Je ta doh leh. Nanan. Adonni. Ee naltso. Shi kodo nas konne. Doh leh. Kudje zelindan lenigi. Da iltcha aji do. Abenana shideli. Ee beni na. Ada di. Ne. Adainol. La ea ya. La. Hadha no da ya da ti. Nihimasa nihikene nihinali. Ba dey tse. Naha alchen. Ado kon do. Nihikene nihina. Si. Biche nahhot egi. Do ea yesi. Di kusinsagi. Yan yan yanat. Ado di ro kon. Ada di. Ne a kuijin. Ze baten. Ze baten. Ze bahaba. Do leh. Da di ninde. Oyo sa hazlin. Do tanah do. Nin kon hachchen. Nin da khaegi. Ako da no da ya da ti. Do ze baten. O shee di hot a kehuitni. Do leh. Kon nas konen. Bantza da kes. Do jo kodo nihachcheni. Kei dan lenigi. Biche. Ya dalchi. Do di nahlnegi. Ze do bahalo go go. Ei shi ea di. A hot a di. Kehuitni. Do leh. Niche chingdo ni ze. Ki dashti. Maado doh chen. De khaide doh leh. Maado shi sa da hallo. Doh leh. Aita ko dahatne. Kon oltcha daanle. La aji na taani dan lenigi ya. Oltcha ada doh ni. La no. Lego belaganabikaya goi. Da hatne. Oltcha ada liya. Do di heixin. Nahlnegi. Yisna tza. Ee nahlnehan. Tatil. Wetna ha no da ba da hanne. Clo. Ee ba da si ti. Oditne. Kodo ea beni na. Ee haganda ndaso. Tcha ado. Aade. Da inol. Tcha da di no. Kon nihachchen. Biche. Ashjane. Hannegi. Niche kudeya. Ado aji bada oltchagi do. Bahat da ni tse. No da di. Ee do a hot a. Yanza da kes. Akon na taani. Nihinigi. Kudje oltchaje. Ha daszooje. Niche kei nihinne. Naha da izneli. Ee biche ashjane da. Ee hot a. Ee yalla. Ako daanle. Do da doh. Nihinana taani. Do da istsa. Oltcha ana dei. Ana. Ana dei gle. Di kusinsagi. Akonne. Yahilni. Go ee doh. Da doh leh. Kon nihila nihinachchen. Nihimasa nihikene nihale. Nihin da haztcha. Ee ba da si ti. Ee beni na. Kodo hanne niche. Kon dey. Shi keiroshina. Ado hadainosne. Da di no. Kodo naha hshni. Ya dey. Ya di. Ni. Ne. Kadya na nahlni. Akon de. Nihinaxola. Shi keiroshina. Anitsko. Nihinaxola. Do nihie. Kodo a kuijin. Ba yeyli ti. Nas doh. Do da doh. Ae de ya dahalne. Da da di. Da no da ya da ti. Do nihie. Kodo. Naha dey. Tsalaado. Zelindoo. Kudjin da. Nishigi. Naha dahliya. Niche chanda kha. Go da. Shi keiroshina. Eiro bantza da kes. Shi kei shina. Ashwade. Ashwade. Ado sa. Do da bi. Ha da no da ya da ti. Abehzin ye. Kon hachchen. Nin da khaegi. Do jo. Ya dahao. Adela huinzen. Do hachkidan. Nanthi ne. Ee ya shod. Da da no da. Amado je. Che. Nihimasa. Na. Kodo hachcheni. Chi ya dalchi. Lende. La shee hota nihia dahao a. Iyanda. Abantza da kes. Ado kodo nihachchen do. Biche. Ya dalchi. La shee do. Niche. Oilti. Do nihinana thinn. Benachi. Di ya dahao. Adela. Do hot a. Abehzin ye. Abehzin ye. Shi keinollini. Akon de. Ben dahu di. Aldo dishne. Kodo nihachchen. Hetsoken. Nihinali ke. Biche. Ya dalchi. Lego la tcha da dakha. Chanda kha. Ahaganda ndaso. Tcha jeta di. No. La do. Nihimasa nite. Amado je. Da doh. Lenigi. Che. Da di. Ne. Da dohne. Niche. Kodo ea. Sa do. Biche konde ilin. Altsko. Ee hanne e. Beda huilza. Di. Kodo ben dahu di. La. Hatne. Niche za. Niche oilti. Niche nanthi. Ya kon nihla. No. Ya da ti. A kuijin. Ako sa. Eche. Ada di. Niya. Akon de. Shi e badzu di. Zendoleh. Kon nihachcheni. Hetsoken. Nihalikken. Di haji. Goshin. Da. Tatil. Wet. Belaganajada. Aji da. Nanthi negida. Do kodo onde. Ze bahalo. Doh leh. No. Niche do. Niche ze hallo. Ze hallo. Patno da. Ba ya da ti. Ee de. Chudo. Ille. Odo. Da da. Odo. Da dey da hatne. Do da dey da hatne. Ee do. Ee. Nda zodo. Shi daanle. Da zodo. Bonzus. Kes. Shisizile. Akon de. Di nas konen. Nige. Niche jo ba in shkei doh leh. Shi keinollini. Kodo. Nda. Nda ni. Thinn doh leh. Ashkei. Jun nanthi negi. Jo hot a. Ee shi shi yaho a. Di ninde khaegi. Bikendeyli tchalinda. Ben di a hot a. Kodo sa. Beda huilza. Ahaganda sundar. Otsanana. Beni nagi. Biche ashjane da. Le. Do kon odishni. Da disdi. Enelaa. Enelaa. Kon nihikene nihina. Beda doh na. Schlayjez. Lin go. Aita da hi ti. Jo ko. Kodo sa. Niche jo ba in shkei. Nihimasa nihikene nihale. Danol. Lenigi. Beda nohti. Niche. Nihinana taani. O ikedje yajilti. Da bahasti. Iya. Nanne e. Ltsko. Na chi. Ko zai. Yan da. Kon hachchen. Led. Led. Di katzaha hotzan de. Bikedje ya dey. Ti. Do leh. Di na taani.[1484.32] Biche jaya deyiltche dolel di na taani dadada no da sad e cheday chedayos Cheday Ashkej jia tche kon Nikhe jaya da tche ne la ey biche ni khe Ben nikhe zildijch Aro hee dadidne ya naasta sey tlingo Ke ndayiltxalchin nde nde ni ndayke yada Akonde a ni da ni la nikhe masan nikhe cheni nalika hui miz Shikayroshinna Jo kodo nikhe ke ni himne Jaya da tche ashho de Ashho de biche di khe ka ne chahdo da esini ilzaa o kodo biche di khe Do da esini ilzaa ey yadi belagana biche yako yego da deskidigi na loa kon Ke hui tindolef ne biche kia pka
We just want to give you the new numbers. We have ten thousand one hundred and thirty-one cases. From the start of this pandemic to today. Positive cases. One hundred and two thousand four hundred and forty-two have been tested here on the Navajo Nation. And of those ten thousand one hundred and thirty-one people who tested positive, seven thousand two hundred and thirty-four Have recovered. And majority of those are young people. That have recovered. Now, five hundred and forty-eight people have died from This virus covid nineteen. And over sixty percent Of those who caught the virus and that have passed on are over sixty years old. Now, young people, you may think that This virus will not take you down, this virus is not gonna get you sick. Statistics say that is pretty much accurate. But you may pass this on to an elder. And where an elder has a higher risk of complications to the virus. And Five hundred and forty-eight families have been impacted by a loss of their family members. You know, we Leadership have continuously said, You know, wear your mask, social distance, wash your hands with soap and water, and stay home. Continuously. You know, and it's up to the Navajo people, you know, yesterday, we were supported And acknowledged for bringing the virus down To a low point here on the Navajo Nation. But as you know, when the virus came on to the Navajo Nation, It spread quickly throughout Our na- our homeland. And we have seen spikes throughout the Navajo Nation. And you know, and I've said this before, and I said this all in Navajo. That people that investigate this, these contact tracers will find out By investigating where these Where the virus has come from. And They will know where it spread. And all of the cases, All of the cases that we've had positive are from family gatherings, social gatherings. And you put your family In jeopardy when you have these family gatherings. These spikes, you know, we have low spikes, yeah. Eleven, fifteen, eighteen. Remember, those are in twenty-four hour increments. Let's say you had fifteen positive cases for seven days straight. You know? Do the math. That's go- that's a lot of individuals who can then spread it within our communities. And now is not the time to let down, ladies and gentlemen. We have high increases in cases in the state of Utah. We have increases in the states around us. And some of these increases have been because of schools reopening. Now, if there are some elected school board members that are viewing today, Please keep your constituents and your citizens informed of what's happening at your schools. Look at what happened to Gallup schools there. There was two positive cases at the school. And just because of Not Social distancing or taking care of themselves, you know, you could see a spread Of cases in that region. And people and school boards are wanting to go back into face-to-face instructions, Meaning bringing our children back. You had a high rise in cases in Coquenino County. You got Flagstaff Schools that come and take their buses into the Navajo Nation, pick up students and take them back to Flag. And that's a concern for all of us. Same thing with Winslow, same thing with Holbrook, Gallup, San Juan in Shiprock. We have taken a position here on Navajo that's saying that we want online courses for this semester. And people just wanna challenge the authority of the Navajo Nation government. But it's up to the Navajo Nation, the citizens, to say no. To say no to these school board members. Be involved In your kids' education and your kids' health and well-being. Now, we're gonna be going into a fifty-seven hour lockdown this weekend. Now, before everybody starts jumping and hollering on social media, let me tell you why. There was an investigation done. Contact tracers did their due diligence. We found out a Navajo citizen went into Utah, Got the virus, Brought it back on to the Navajo Nation, Had a ceremony here on the Navajo Nation, Which infected everybody that was participating in that. And also had other social and family gatherings. And the spread is now at forty-plus Individuals who have tested positive pursuant to what the contact tracers have told us. And so we're gonna have to Slow everything down, we're gonna have to put stay-at-home orders because we don't know how far This has gone out in contact with other people. And we're not getting much help from these family members in where they have been. I did talk in Navajo. I, and they need to be able To let us know and these contact tracers know Where they have been. And so you, you can't just hide these things. It is for the health and well-being Of everyone around us. And there is also another Concern in the satellite Chapters in the Eastern Agency, Where we're reevaluating that, someone coming from Albuquerque back home. And these are hotspots right now that needs to be under control. So I encourage everybody out there To wear your masks, To social distance and to wash your hands with soap and water. And to stay home. Now, we're gonna be implement- re-implementing our stay-at-home order Just to be safe. So that means no traveling, nobody going for chips and soda to the store. The only people that should be traveling are essential employees. And if you need to go to Get some supplies, then only one person should go. And to get those food and supplies for Your elder or your family members. And since there's no vaccine, this is the future, ladies and gentlemen. This is the future of, what, in this covid nineteen pandemic. Without a vaccine, you're gonna be seeing these types of incidents pop up from now into the future. Something to think about. And that's upon each and every one of us. So the curfew starting this evening will commence from eight PM. It used to be nine PM, eight PM to five AM each day. And the fifty-seven hour weekend lockdown for this week. And we'll reevaluate these two hotspots Next week. And we'll move forward on future decisions. So this is the future, ladies and gentlemen. Here on Navajo and all across the country. So we're gonna have to get used to some of these measures. And we ask everybody, We ask everybody to adhere to the public health professionals' recommendation and don't, we said this for many weeks, don't let down. Don't begin to just think, oh, the numbers are low, we just can do whatever we want. This is an example of what happens if we let down. And it just took one person leaving the nation into a hot zone in Utah, coming back And not following with the protocols of family gathering, social distancing. You know, we, we did have people doing drive-up events, wearing masks. And obviously, at this event that this individual went to, nobody was wearing masks if they all caught the virus that were in In that ceremony. And then it went off. And everybody went home and I don't know who they associated with, and that's what they're investigating right now. These contact tracers. And we need people to be open and honest about where they've been. People are starting to hide where they're going, where they're, where they've been. So that they don't get in trouble, but they gotta be honest and let people know. The best thing to do is just to stay home. Stay here on Navajo. And over and over, you know, over and over, I've said that, ladies and gentlemen, over and over. Leaders have been saying that. And now is not the time to let up, ladies and gentlemen, my Navajo people. And so we'll be getting out some food and supplies so that you all can be prepared. We know we can't hit all one hundred and ten chapters by this weekend. But there are other chapters out there that do have food. You know, I saw some chapters that still had Whole bunch of food in their chapter houses. And here we're giving out boxes of food too. And we thought they would bring out the food so we can all distribute it, but no, they didn't, they kept it in. So there is some supplies in some of these chapter houses out there. We need to prepare for the fifty-seven hour weekend curfew. And we'll reevaluate things this evening or KTM at six AM. We'll have more information on these two Hotspots. And we are having meetings, we had a meeting this morning on it. And we'll continue to monitor that as we move forward. And I plead with you, ladies and gentlemen, nikhe jo ba in shkede. That's what that means. I plead with you. To wear your mask, to social distance, To wash your hands and use hand sanitizers, and now stay at home. Our kids are at home. And only essential employees are to be out. This is not a lockdown during the day, but it's a stay-at-home order and you are To be at home unless you need to get essentials. That doesn't mean hot Cheetos and energy drink run. It means to be at home, taking care of your family So that we can keep this virus from going into some of the homes, all of our homes throughout the Navajo Nation. I know I spent a lot of time, I just wanted to focus on this. There's a lot of others that we need to talk about. But forty cases In a region is something to let everybody know. And this happened within five days. And we are getting mobilized, mobilization happening. Sage Memorial Hospital doing an outstanding job getting their Healthcare workers out there, their contact tracers on this. Just pray for them, don't get in their way. And if you don't have masks, contact us. Eli or Jared, somebody on the line will let you know how to get some masks to your home. And some food for those that are extremely impacted by the virus. And so I'll end there, you know, we just want you to be safe out there. And people Are looking at our response here as well. So let's continue to stay diligent on what's happening. God bless you. I love you guys. That's why we do this. It's not like We don't care, you know, all this discussion about vaccines and cures and all that, you know? The Navajo Nation Human Review Research Review Board, John Hopkins, Even those that want to look at the bigger Bigger goal of finding some help, some cure, So that we can get back to some sense of normal Is being discussed as we speak. But ladies and gentlemen, for us to be safe here on the Navajo Nation and to fight against this virus, we need to all come together. And we all need to explain all these things that you get information, All the information that you receive to your children, to your family members, because this virus is not going away. It's not going away anytime soon. Let that sink in. It's not going away anytime soon. So there's gonna be spikes like this. And it's up to us To get control of these spikes, these hotspots by listening to our professionals And our leaders out there. God bless you. God bless the great Navajo Nation. And I'll turn the time over to our Vice President for his update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all those updates. And of course, we know that our Our momentum kinda shifted, right? Where the data and the spiking that's happening in those places where it's happening. You know, we always knew that we had this option to backtrack and to pull up and to, you know, slow down the surges. And so As leaders, we take that very seriously. So I just wanna thank our Department of Health, our EMT team, and all our health professionals for giving us, you know, these Guidance. And President, thank you for your leadership and all those out there. Now we need our people to really, you know, Not be lackadaisical in adherence to, to all of the measures that are in place, right? Because it's really about protecting our most vulnerable, our elders. And we really need to, to just tighten up. And we really want to come out of this as a whole, right? No more should we see any of our people passing away and, and dying. But, you know, it is what it is right now, and we're protecting what we have. And that's what you do as leaders. And so I wanna thank our President, Dr. Jim, and, you know, it's, it's a crucial time right now. Here we are, Census twenty twenty. We're needing to have every member of the Navajo Nation counted. You know, we have September thirtieth right around the corner. And so each one Reach twenty, just go out, knock on doors, your own people, and tell them, you must get counted. There's four ways to self-respawn. Online, you know, go to outreach, you can phone it in, and you could also just send up a smoke signal. Say I'm over here, smoke signal. My gosh, you know, we need to be counted, every one of us. And so President, myself, and all of our leaders, and Arbin Mitchell, we wanna thank him again. I know it's been covid nineteen, you know, we're all in this together. Everybody started from the same conditions. What are we gonna make of those conditions? And so I just wanted to challenge all of you Like here, you know, you've heard my speech before, water boils at two hundred and twelve degrees, right? We all know that. Does water boil at two hundred and eleven degrees? No. By one more degree of extra effort, one more degree of knocking on doors, counting people, one more degree of extra Late night hours staying up for the benefit of our people can change our environment, right? We can get by one degree to get out. And also today is National Voter Recognition, Voter Registration Day. I wanna get all of you out there, you know, you know, We don't have to say it again, you know, President, he's got his guy and I got my guy and we're in opposite corners, but guess what? We all need to rise up and vote all across Navajo, all across Indian Country, all across the great state of Arizona, Utah, New Mexico, But all across North America, right? United States of, of, of America. Now, we get out the right to vote, then, you know, we can, you know, continue to work together. And so that's what I'm about. By relationship, we can correct. By relationship, we can inspire. And then we go forth unified. Let's just stay unified in our, our uniqueness, right? And that's what we can do when we vote. And so whether you're an R or a D or an I, man, get out the vote. And so God bless you. The Vice President loves you. And I know President Nez, we're praying for our nation, and we'll continue to do that until Till the cows come home. So we love you. God bless you. And continue to Just wear your mask, social distancing, stay home, wash your hands, sanitize, And, you know, stay out of those places. And we're all, we're strong together. And so appreciate you. God bless you. And Vice President here signing off. Next up, Arbin Mitchell, looking for that latest data that we have. Hopefully, we're at thirty percent. Hopefully, we're at forty percent, right? We got a few days. Stand and be counted.
Thank you, Vice President. Aro shihad nashna da, President Nez, and then others that are listening, say noh flagi. Ashihon shego ey kodo eyan chilshna de shah. Twenty twenty census ey kodo ebe chilshna. Kalenza ho ljix. Aro da ey ban nada alteh jo ey kodo ebe chilshna. Aro as of yesterday, as of yesterday, September the twentieth, Ey onikhe response rates is at twenty point one. Neediya Vice President ya hadzi, hopefully, we're at twenty-five, hopefully, we're at thirty, no. So we're at twenty point one, twenty point one percent. Aro nda eya internet ye na itlagi ey four point four percent. Aro others agi mene phone edo da mailing that document back, the questionnaire document, fifteen point seven. Now, if you look at these figures, fifteen point seven, that means a lot of our response is probably mailing it back. Ey de yahhot aro nda ishio Akhia nkidde dechnik dan ki de ni do dekro Natana klagi self-response. Aro nda this is our very first time for Navajo. Although this is our very first time for Navajo. Although for other Indian nation to do update leave, although to self response. So this is our very first time self response. Although by agency, by agency, AA four defines agency twenty three point seven. Although Chinli Agency sixteen point six, Western Agency nineteen point six, Eastern twenty point eight. Although the Northern eight twenty point two. Although the uh President's Office, ourselves and uh Gaming Enterprises, we were in Northern Northern Agency Saturday and uh although this area jumped like point within within two days, point point five, point four to point five percent in those uh three tracks within these areas. Although the Eastern Agency too, last week. Fire, so that track uh within two or three days jumped point five percent. So the uh these gatherings that is being hosted by President, although uh Gaming Enterprise. Eh eh yeah, we 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 have social distancing. Although we wear our face masks. But window again, that is also, that's how we're taking information. Although by by tracks with high number uh within within Navajo, there's thirty eight tracks within Navajo Nation. Although Nahatzi and and Lupton, they're at thirty percent, they're at thirty percent. Although uh Tuna Nistazit at twenty eight percent. Although Winderock, Winderock eh yeah, at twenty eight point four percent. Although Delcon, Tisto, White Cones and then Wells, twenty five point nine. Although Herfino, Naiyizi, counselor, at twenty four point seven. Eh eh they give that yet because uh this area sort of connects to uh where we were at. Uh this area jumped uh jumped uh a lot too. Although Mexican Spring, four defines in Crystal in the New Mexico area, twenty four point five. So we have like um nineteen tracks that are within uh over twenty percent. Although just to compare Navajo to other Indian tribes within Arizona. Eh Hala uh Havasu Pie twenty twenty seven point four. Although Navajo at twenty point one. Although TO at eighteen point four, Hopi at seventeen point seven. Fort Apache at seventeen point one, St. Carlos at fifteen point seven. So those are tribes within 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 Arizona. I know that there's twenty two tribes. Although there's some other large land based tribe, like Crow, they're only at sixteen point nine. Although Pine Ridge at twenty point seven, Rosebuck Sue at twenty one point eight. Although Cheyenne River at twenty seven point five. So within uh Indian nation, those are some of the uh some of the uh percentage self response. Although uh mobile questionnaire system. So today, today eh yeah, we're at Kianta. Although we'll be at Menlito, Lupton and Oak Springs. Although Thursday, Chinli and then also uh over at NTU, Crown Point. Friday go is Shubrock. Although next Monday, next Monday. Although next week, we only have three days left, September thirty. So next week, we want to be at the agencies. Like Pinion, Delcon, Crown Point, Kianta, Chinli, Tubusville and Shubrock. Those are probably the areas that we'll be at. Although so if you're not home, they'll leave a notice of visit. Uh a one page document with your census ID number. Over at the Navajo uh Nation Shopping Centers at these areas. Eh twenty twenty census dot gov, you can uh you can do it online. September thirty. Eh yeah. Eh eh the. Although and you know, you can, I can, we all can. Although and. Non-response, non-response follow-up, there's probably like three hundred to four hundred employees out there. So hopefully we can get to a hundred percent by by September the thirty. If you if you combine uh the non-response um uh operation with the self response. So we're probably at close to seventy percent. So we need to do like another thirty percent within this next, this week and next week. Thank you.
Dr. Fowler. Yeah. How go she had to yeah, though she is not. It's a. Although she. Oh what is odd, that's crazy. Now eh, now. Don't. Although did it cause. Eh graduate. Oh what ah da, it ah. She eh do essential employee. And here. Although she. They should. Although do you know. Although do you say. Ah just. Eh now, but it ah. Although do birthday parties. She. Yeah, go. Eh she. Do what ah eh. Then no. Eh da. Eh la. Eh co ah de eh do. Eh co eh she. Eh bin ya. Although it's. Although. Yeah. Learn how to solve problems. Oh no. Eh she. Eh co eh nah. Although do. Eh co eh eh yeah, do uh. Uh eh eh yeah, sure. Did it do 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 do. But but. But. Eh co eh. Eh co the under the Department of Personal Management. She. Eh nah eh. Although. Eh co. Eh co. Although. Eh co. Although she.
Nze dole, ado keb el naso kenzen dole, hot a e keni dole, hot a inza el na holjushdo. Ado ya delchil chaxin tsogoe di nan nan chindha. Chaxin tsogoe di niche er ol il do neitahi do, am e niitehi hot choncha chaasi. Ado achan chitelzi do otach ailzi. Ak chondeh chajo i zi sao el eh. Chayshin kodan hot dahton do chasho in yen nan chon da hot do ni, hot do ni. Do bi kechada chine da oh jo beb el hot chilne. Jo eh shin ol ye, your your attitude, it really tells a lot. Your personality, the ah hot eh. Ado di an nixi zin deke e self-awareness dechne. The more you know about yourself, the better you are at adapting to life changes that suit your needs. Jo di kad nixilchol jeshi ke pa yashtke. Chajo otach ailzi. Aro an na nle rigo, an e na techa asadi cholno. Jo hot a ben nashid esthha. Chayshin doya't eh shin, doya't eh ho ye chadot zihi cholno. Ak chondeh be'et etil kes, jo taha no da tahanne. Eh ne. Aro kha ek abana nishna edik a'ade i chahne. Ak oh nixi, nixi man nixi re'eh. Nixi nal nixi chen nixi masana da, ni ado nixi maji, nixi maya'je nixi ya'ja da. Ek cha'ta ché. An she ini chesh nahay keh ne. Ado ch'e'yan thhotah ethin da an dalne. Jo eh an nixi naxa'sla, a'elcheni niitlani. Atso keta, anale keta da niitlani. Jo eh nixi naxana nasla. Ak oh di hot a ben nan ne xtlai, jo an nixi ini'ta't eh ya. Eh yo oh ne do ike dil zine eh elaha shik'edho shedene. Ak oh be part of the solution, it do ni, nixi lato naxa'sla. An an i kha'eh atinalni oh sh'oh yo. La'al yugo cholna ta itche dole. An she ini chesh nahay keh ne. Jo kha'eh you gotta be creative and set some more plans. Jo kha'eh damoi yar'ekun ne da na da esthha nixi ts'a. Ha le'ta do la kha'da na da esthha ne. Eh kun ne, nanlne shkun ne da ts'na do t'hal ne do nanlne shna ne eh. Ak oh eh etil ghalta hot etni. Jo shi nda'ah hot eh. Di chel aton, aton dalne shoh eh kha'eh la'tschi selt eh ne eh chesh naxa'eh di lih di ch'eh. Kha'eh ya di plene lahoh ot do ni, jo kha'eh sar degol do'ta esthha. Shu do oh hot eh, eh jan shi shi essential dechu do a lahoh. Lato shi shik'es tchidi behes an iki. Hot a kha do a ro le hos dogun nan nan dechnu ch'ad dechlu ol ghallo. Eh eh do do kehoh chell i da waliya. Eh eh an shi ben na chal chashna shedetolzell. Eh na, eh shi kha'eh be'et da'ah huiliya shik'edho shedene. Ak oh ashon de ba banan nixi ni chah be'et da'ah chollian do. Ado la'al yugo, doya't eh hi be'echi ya da'tke. Ado ade sadnlini ben hich'eh da'ahlini. Be'et da sohtke. Chala do ne etni taha ni le. Chayshin amanle, chayshin re'eh le. Yunnalde chela ba masana chela ben nale. Dan detoni shedani le ne. Ak oh eh na tsado ya't eh hi be'et da'ahlini chajo ban ts'da'ak. An nixi eh itch'eh taha yoshna, hot. A. A yan ti hot a hanzo eh an itch'eh taha yoshna shedani le ne. Ak chondeh, jo eh ben na dan chidi nixi keedho shedene. Ye be'et da'ah chollia. Ado otach a'ahlzi eh. Yo ta. Ne. Nixi ts'ado hot eh ak chondeh nixi. Chaxino lah eh bekehano l'eh. Eh ikehe, nixi etat el lato ya ado la'i. Di kha'eh asthha de damoi ezli taha esne shen da. Ado na tinova arcebi damoi na ezli ochallni eh da. Ak oh. Nahoh otoltoh eh inizun do juno kesmish otoltoh do leh eh tanizun. Ak chondeh, an nixi pa'tach huiliya eh ya shik'edho shedene. Banan nixi nchka, aro ch'eh t'ahkhe. Eh ts'na ghallo aro ch'andahkhe. Chashne la de kha doh nan nixi detonni. An she ini la obi ken tanallne ne ne. Jo ezze. Ch'gato ishin chatsa de'ta'ah do le chate yo ne eh elche'eh. Eh do bahojno da. Chaxine la nixi dene kon beke'ta hasdi. Ch'chu do ita'ah do le shik'edho shedna ye be'chada inolne. Nixi do lato nixi na anthin eteh. Chondtsogoe kha don nixi naxana si dole. Do, kha do shi shich'eh linii, kha don nixi naxana si dole. Na ikehe do da taha yoshia. Chey.
Oh, Shitsui, for your words and all of your encouragement, ado na anthin. Hehenshago Shitsui, ado ya't eh. Hanotscho shik'edho shitchezine. She'eh ya, ado nen shnege ethopa ha'eh nishna notchatshini e pasischin. Ashi he'eh dech'eh rokiya an eh dashanale. Ado she'eh ya, the Division of Economic Development Division Director Esali, ado heh. Good morning and thank you very much for tuning in with us this morning with the updates from our leadership. So, ado heh, nan hanan da'ah dasatahiki. Mr. Jonathan Nez, ado Akaden dasatahiki, Mr. Myron Leiser. For providing us some much-needed updates this morning regarding the current public health order to be implemented and changed here moving forward for the safety of our Navo people. So with that being said, I'm going to go into some quick updates regarding the current status of our expenditure plan for the CARES money for Division of Economic Development. Auto just to just weigh in on some feedback regarding our businesses here on the Navo Nation. We are very understandable of the current situations we are in with the closure of the Navo Nation as well as also the implementation of the public health orders. But as mentioned over and over, especially with Shitsui Dr. Fowler talking about the current situation we are in and us working together to abide by all of the health orders necessary for a better future for our people. We understand the current limitations that businesses have had to face here on the Navo Nation as well as those of us needing to procure different essential items as well as also to prepare for the future here on the Navo Nation as well as also changing our plans here moving forward. Going to our current expenditure plan that we have in place, that Division of Economic Development has been working on the current expenditure that has been allotted to us for business relief. We are currently in the first round of offering assistance for businesses. This includes a business relief fund as well as an artist relief fund. As of today, this is as of yesterday actually, so I have some new updated numbers again. But as you see here, we have a little around 445 applicants that have applied for both the business and artist grant applications. Of that amount there, there's 144 of those applicants have received their funding. So that means we are at around 1.2 million dollars that have been sent out in direct relief for business and also for artisans. I took that down again and divided those between artisans and businesses. We have 102 artisans that have been assisted up to this point, that ranges around 493,000 and about 42 businesses who have also received 757,000 dollars worth of direct relief from the CARES Act that has been designated for this particular program. As of yesterday, we had a current review of 46 applicants that values about 488,000 dollars with a total of 255 applicants that are pending their application necessary to move forward. This means the applicant has to make some revisions to the application as well as also provide additional information that have been requested of them. As you can see, up to date, none of these applicants have had a denial. They have been going through the process of review. Some have been asked to provide additional information, which we have been requesting. And we're very thankful to those individuals that have been patient with us in the process to get these applications through. The process that we have is all online. Very understandable that that might be a barrier for many. Therefore, our offices have been providing technical support for those that need it. But we're also very thankful to those individuals that are able to help their relatives to process these applications online. So we can save the travel as well as also maintain the stay-at-home order. With the new public health order that will be issued again, we are going to take into mind the need to limit travel on the Navo Nation. So therefore, that is why we have this system set up online to process these documents. By agency, we broke down the funding. For Eastern Agency, there's 18 applicants that have been approved. Of those 18, 11 are artists, 7 are businesses. For Defiance Agency, there's 37 total with a total of 26 artists and 11 businesses. Central Agency has 24 applicants approved with 18 of those are artists, 6 of them are business. Western Agency has 23 applicants that were approved. 20 of them are business, sorry, 20 are artists, 3 of them are businesses. Northern Agency has 16 approved applicants that have been funded. 9 of those are artists and 7 of them are businesses. Our off-reservation areas include 26. 18 of those are artists and 8 of them are businesses. As of this date, we have a total applicants of 477 that have been through the process to complete their registration with the Navo Nation, giving us a total number of 657 registered businesses now resourced on the Navo Nation for the economic and business relief funds. So as we move forward here, all of our offices are designated to offer technical support. Our main office here in St. Michael's, Arizona. Pretty much myself and my staff have been on hand with getting technical support to those needing to get through the process. But we really are depending on a lot of you all to help your relatives, to help get them through the process, to get their applications filed for the CARES Fund as well as also to get applied for the business relief and then to get registered on the Navo Nation. It's understandable that this is a process. It's a lengthy process if you don't answer all of the questions that are inputted into the different applications. But we've been able to get all these individuals processed through both registering with the Navo Nation and with their priority listing that has been set up for this particular CARES Act funds. Because of all the guidelines that have been laid out for the Treasury, we're abiding by them to ensure that when the audit does happen for this expenditure plan, we have all of the necessary documents in place to provide the justification for the individuals receiving these funds. Really depending a lot on many of you to help expedite this process, to help those individuals needing to get through the process. Local leadership from our chapters as well as also our leadership throughout the Navo Nation to help communicate the process here to streamline it so that we can get individuals to be applied and then eventually have an approval process in place. Timeline has been averaging about 2 hours to about 8 hours for the application processing, meaning that that 2 hours starts when an application is submitted and the applicant goes through the process of review and then thereafter are awarded a fund. So it's been averaging depending on the number of applications that have been coming in. We are going to be mobilizing the team to be located in various locations throughout the Navo Nation. We will be posting those informations here online so you're there able to find out where we will be in the near future. We will also be bringing on additional support to provide to get applicants through the process of both registering with the Navo Nation and your CARES Act application for business and artist relief. This afternoon, we are going to be located in Gallup. We're going to be assisting the artisans that register with the Earl's Restaurant. I, we work with the team over there to get this set up for them to start receiving applications for artisans as well as for maybe those that qualify for the business grant. So we will be over there starting at 1 o'clock to 5 o'clock this afternoon. As we move forward, we will be publishing and announcing all of our other locations moving forward to get applications accepted through the process. So, ta'akwirin jahasdi, ado heh. Thank you very much for being patient with us in this process. It's very new to us and we're adapting to the system that has been set up and making changes as we need to do moving forward so that we can get all of the monies expended here moving forward. We will be readdressing some of the funds if there is funds sitting in place so that we're able to get all of the money sent out to those that will be needing these funds and then moving forward to readdress some of the concerns that have also been brought up to our attention regarding businesses here on the Navo Nation. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jim for updates from our Health Command Center. Ta'akwirin heh.
And everyone, this is Dr. Jill Jim. I'm here with the Navajo Department of Health and I just want to commend everyone here at the Command Center also throughout the Navajo Nation for being patient in this pandemic. I know that we probably didn't want to hear any news of another lockdown, but it inevitably was going to happen. And I just want to reassure to everyone to stay vigilant. These cases are very important as they are detected. The gatherings are very not advisable. Although they're occurring and when we go out into a hotspot and coming back into the nation when we have very few positive cases, it can interrupt the entire mitigation strategy to keeping the curve down. So I just want to ensure that all the work, the hard work that you guys have done, we can continue to go in the right direction by making these slight changes. So I just want to thank all the presenters today. She'eh, Dr. Jill Jim, nishka do. Look an shmotchatshini pasischin do eshin, dashach'eh do, zokne ne, dashanale. Do na desan da'aisa nasha. Hot a'ts'ton shne do, kha'eh di. It's is ba'eh yanje be'etin shi do, kha'eh di shenana shoshe. Ak oh shi nixi dene, kha'eh di, dekrosen tagi. Ben na da desna, kha'eh di. Nixi, nixi dene be'ke'yeke. Kha'eh di she ba'na taha nizun do, do kha'eh di ati. An yela'tran dekes do, di kha'eh di inele. An nixi do, nixi se, bida despa lo, etainil suno. Do do ay isu, an. Elchi indasee zo, elte'eh do, el'tanje'eh indasee zo do. Do kha'eh di, di, kha'eh high-tech surfaces do, yeni. Kha'eh di an nixi ch'eh debi'eh do, aha'wan de do, nihna nishte'eh da hot eneki. Ben da'ahljo lo, akoi ch'eh do, akoi ch'eh do, elchena alke'oh da. Kha'eh di she ya'teh do, kha'eh ban ses keso. A'ado al'thotaisa no'tan gi, kha'eh ikehe na nixi ni do. Do di kha'eh di dekrosen tagi, nasaita do hul yeni. Kha'eh di kui she signs and symptoms hul yeni. Kha'eh di ba'ta hani zin. Jo di, lato di, a dekrosi be't anhola le. J'jal khorso, kha'eh di. High fever da'teni do. Kha'eh di, hado da, da dani ho. N'jekwita, nazia. Da da'teni, kha'eh di hot a be'teh. Di dekrosen tagi, a dekrosi be'ego. Be't ego, kha'eh di, na shi do, na shi do, kon ati. Kon ati nashni. Ado kha'eh di, elcheni kaha, de'oh bahashtke'eh, de'eh ne. Di, elcheni kaha, she'binina do, kha'eh di nixi. Nixi do, bida despa lo, kon na shi. Eh na, di kha'eh di dekros, j'jal khorso, yaj'ltke'oh. Hot j'th'kalo, j'jal gwasho da. Di do, hese do, hichin bida despa lo eh. Ye'go kha'eh, di nashnigi. Di, hey da, kha'eh di bedo do na hot eh. Hot a ban ses de'ikeshin, eh na, kha'eh di. A'dat'ano ke'oh da, aha'wanon da. Nixi ke'dene, am, hey da da'ah, nixi ke'eh indlini, ni maya'je. Kha'eh di nixi masana da, an elchen da. Ado hey da, hey'ta da, ke'dene, ban hawani lihaya'ho. Eh bichin bida despa lo, do bezeh bida despa lo, etainil suno de'ya. Do, do bayahas, do bayahas na hot eh da. Do do, do shedetol na'ta jinzoo, do do hot a'n sezikh'es shi. El'to kha'eh di, jo di. Ha'de shi na'aldehle akoi ch'eh. Ta'eh di na'ansho, ta'eh di ezel en' da ne'kele. Do di kha'eh di dene. Kha'eh di bezeh de'il en' ghallo, do do joo ba'ta hylne da eh ben na. Jo kha'eh di, kui shi dene ben na da desna gi. Ay'oh bahashtke'oh ban ses de'ikesh kha'eh ezel en' da ni. Danlini, do kha'eh di, ezeh ne kaha danlini da. Kha'eh ben na nishina de'il ne, en' na de'il ne, do kha'eh di. Elchenal ke'oh di, kha'eh di. Ay isolation aliya ni she. Baya'teh do, di kha'eh di. Bekehoh da il'oh. Jo di ha'de shi nda'ke'gi, di dekrosen tagi da'de. Hot de'il na jinzoo, she'eh kha'eh di. Ah bahashtke'oh, a'di kha'eh di. Aha'wan de, it's on je'nj'g'ah, shi ndei'alt'oh. Aha'wan, jo isolation do quarantine hul yeni. Kui she ayga'ni, ba'ta huzen de, bayanan, bayananashtke'eh do. A kha'eh di, ban nohasneto, kha'eh di. Eh de'ya, kha'eh di, di ch'ehgi, ba'ta desse hinsen. Ado, akoi ch'eh, kha'eh di non lockdown na hot ne'eki. Ke'ndole da'teni di, da na da deskha do di, ba'asht'eh na da dolne. Ado di kha'eh di, t'yan da thwada da, da da'teni. H'wan de ana ishot'ha do, beniye. Di eh ya, community spread hul yeni gi. Do bedkiso do ni la beniye, etati ne. Ta'eh she'eh di, kha'eh di, la'shi be'ek'eh da'tch'ha da. Da'th'ohla, akwen nixi dene. Ba'an nixi etanit eh. Jo di nixi ke'eh kha'eh di basit'ke'oh da de'ne. Do kha'eh di. Nixi dene da niitlani, kha'eh di ke'eh beni na. Kui she she, she chamaya'je do, chamado, chamasoni she'da dolne. Nixi ma da nishne do, shada da da, nixi de'ezhe da'tan shno, etan shno. Kha'eh di, ikehe na nixi ni do, kha'eh di lockdown hul yeni. Ashon den, nixi dene, kha'eh di. Di kha'eh di, nixi ke'eh ban ses de'ikesho, h'wan de na ishot'ha. Ado hot eh da. Ado hot eh da, aha'wan j'etaz'ago, eh na. Eh na, di kha'eh di lockdown aliya ni. Kha'eh na de'il ne di. Kui shi kha'eh di de'deske'iben na. Do do bedkiso do ni la beniye. Jo do, an j'g'ago eh ati. H'wan t'raga j'g'ado, k'ch'ahan j'g'ago da. Eh ben na, kha'eh di, aha'wan de na ishot'ha da de'ne. Di eh do, di eh do, an aneki. Etati ni da. Di il'ka'da dekrosen tagi, kha'eh di nixi t'ghanchni'oh. Ay'dan CDC, h'ono, Centers for Disease Prevention and Control hul yeni. Akwen, akwen elno be'kehoh da il'eng. Eh na, kha'eh di dekrosen tagi, y'oh'ta. Ah la'jen kha'eh eten, no new cases h'ani ne na. Ka'da t'na kitabon, damoi ez, damoi da ezli. Ak oh shik'eh shedene, kha'eh di, kha'eh di hot a de'hat's. And I just want to thank the listeners and those on the calls this afternoon to just to remind everyone about the lockdown. And it's really a community mitigation strategy to continue to stop the spread of COVID-19. It's not really to instill on mandating things because we know this has worked. Right now, we don't want to continue to increase the spread in neighboring communities or even more than the areas that are currently impacted with these clusters. And by reducing mobile mobility, increasing community mitigation strategies as reducing gatherings, advising people to not gather, not move around as much as possible. That's the only, one of the only ways right now we can contain the disease. And we know on the Navajo Nation that has worked for us. I think the last couple of weeks, we've been very, I've seen more of these risky gatherings and I, and heard about these gatherings to the Command Operations Center. So it's not, it's inevitable it was going to occur because a lot of people were starting to do these kinds of gatherings and going off the reservation and into hotspot areas. So you really have to be aware of these hotspot areas as they change over time. Depending on the state's response to the pandemic. That's why we're carefully surveilling the state of Arizona, state of Utah, and state of New Mexico and their response to the pandemic because that influences our response at times because of the caution that they have. And I think this has been mentioned already that individuals that have went off to the reservation to these hotspot areas, they come back and bring it. Because of the low positivity rates that already existed before, there isn't that many cases that were positive, so it has to come from another place. So I just want to remind everyone that these kinds of transmissions and ways of transmitting the disease, we're all aware of it, we just need to be constantly reminded. But all we have to remember is that we need to save lives, protect our elders and our people. Because this is a disease, we don't have a cure. We don't have a vaccine. And we also are aware that that's not any, that's not going to happen anytime soon. So the only tools we have is ways to reduce the spread is through these mitigation strategies. Some people might call it other things, but no, from the public health standpoint, these have worked for us. So I just want you to all commend yourselves to those that have continued to follow the orders and continue to, to know that this is effective. Wearing masks indoors and outdoors is effective. Around people you don't know within families and gatherings. With you have no visitor sign, that's all okay, it can be done. And I hope that the next couple of days and through the weekend, we should all think back and reflect and, and stay home and try to ensure that this disease doesn't spread. So once again, thank you to all the listeners. The Health Command Operations Line is 928-871-7014. Once again, if you have questions or also need assistance, if you're in any of these communities that have been impacted or families, And I just want to thank everyone for listening again and good afternoon.